We'd like to welcome everybody to the February 25th meeting of the City of New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time, the prayer will be given by Alderman Best.
Can we please bow our heads? Heavenly Father, I come before you this evening thanking you for another day. Lord, I come right at this moment asking you for guidance, that you would touch each member of this board, touch their heart and their mind, so that when we conduct the business of this city, that we will be fair, honest, and respectful to all of our citizens of this great city. Amen?
Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call and roll?
Alderman Dingell, here. Alderwoman Harris, present. Alderman Astor, here. Mayor Outlaw, here. Alderman Kinsey, here. Alderman Best, present. Alderman Oden, here.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to look at the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second is there discussion. Seeing all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Mr. Stevens, item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven, very happy to report that we have Mary Hogan here with us tonight. Our soon-to-be, as soon as you appoint her to be, the Director of Finance and administer her oath of office. So, we've conducted an interview for this position along with members of the board, and extended the offer to Mary. She's with us tonight. She was at our retreat. That's when most of y'all got to meet her. So, after making the motion to appoint Ms. Hogan for the position, she will need to administer the oath of office from the other clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Mary, what's her last name?
Hogan.
Hogan, I'm sorry, as our finance director.
Second.
Motion and second is there discussion. Seeing all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, the same. Madam Clerk, at this time, would you do the installation and the Board of Alderman will go down to welcome her?
Do you, Mary Hogan, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God? I do. Do you, Mary Hogan, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Director of Finance of the City of New Bern, so help you God? I do. Do you, Mary Hogan, solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God? I do. All right, let's get a signature. Yes.
Mr. Stevens, this is kind of item number eight.
Mayor, item number eight is a noise consultant presentation. As you recall, the city contracted with Stewart Acoustical Consultants to review the technical portion of the city's draft noise ordinance and conduct a site visit. Mr. Blackwell is here tonight. He's going to do a presentation on his firm's findings and recommendations. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Blackwell.
Mary, we've time to make you official.
Good evening, Porter Governors. Thank you for having me. My name is Ezra Blackwell, and I represent Stewart Acoustical Consultants. And I conducted a noise study here in the City of New Bern. I was invited by Mr. Mark Stevens and Scott Davis, Mr. Scott Davis. And so, I'm here to present the results of the noise study that we conducted. All right, so, measurement locations. We connected a one-minute average measurement during live music playing from Blackbeard's outside the patio in the Wells Fargo parking lot, and at three additional locations shown above. One was at 210, I believe, can't remember the name of that street. Three concerned citizens. And so, what we have here is we have 83 dba LEQ right in the parking lot. And as with sound, it dissipates as you get farther away from the source noise. So, we have 57 dba there, we have a 59, and we have a 51. Note that LEQ max slow levels, which we, myself, Mark, and Scott discussed, are approximately 5 db higher than the levels that you're seeing here. Our overall LEQ, LA EQ, at Blackbeard's outdoor patio during the live music performances, we have 77 dba LEQ 60 feet from the patio, and we have 83 dba LEQ 45 feet from the outdoor patio. And this is the spectral content of these measurements. Notice that there is a very high low-frequency noise component here. These are unweighted measurements. The A-weighted measurements, you would see that the lower frequencies would be lower because the human ear reacts to lower frequencies and doesn't really hear them as high as in these readings. These readings were made by a sound pressure level meter. So, there is a low-frequency noise component that goes through walls, it goes through windows, and can affect people inside. Measurement results at selected residences, we have, can't really see there. Yes, these are the addresses, 217 Middle Street, I believe. And that level is 57, 58 dba LEQ, and that's 430 feet from the outdoor patio. We have the 217, the rear of 217 Middle Street. And that is 59 dba, 350 feet from the outdoor patio, and 51 dba at 210 Metcalf Street, which is 650 feet from the outdoor patio. Like I said before, your source noise dissipates the farther you get away from the actual source. Now, here is the spectral content from those measurements at the nearby residences. As you can see, there is still that lower-frequency component to the music that was playing from the patio. And this is something that we are trying to deal with, with the noise ordinance. Our recommendations are, we need to help you develop a ordinance based on the measurement of repeatedly occurring maximum level at specified distance ranges from the source. Measurements near the source often avoid interference of sound from other sources that occur far from the source, and we can be confident that sound is measured is from the source of concern. Meaning, we want to measure closer to the source so we don't get any background noise from any other sources that could affect the readings and make it harder to determine that the source noise is coming from where it's coming from. And that makes it easier for law enforcement to be able to get a reading and to have probable cause to enter a location. Like I mentioned before, sound decreases with distance. By setting limits appropriate for the specified measurement distance, the level at the homes will be at an appropriate lower level. During festivals with more sources, levels reaching homes will be higher but still limited. Lower limits for street performers. And attention to planning, to limit growth of permanent sources. The ordinance would not provide measurement limits for sources other than amplified sound. I did speak with Mr. Mark Stevens regarding acoustic sound. Acoustic sound is a little different. It is not amplified. And however, it is, when you're closer to the source, it is louder. But I am not really sure how that would affect the commercial residential zoning that you all are working on at this point. So, that is to be discussed in the future as well. Also, we came up with measurements no closer than 50 feet from the center of actual band locations. And so, within that 50 feet, or with that 50 feet, it should be a limit of 70 dba. Slow max at a distance based on at least three observations of 70 dba will give probable cause to law enforcement. If the measurements cannot be made within 50 feet, and it can have to be made farther out, 80 to 100 feet from the center of the band, the limit would drop to 65 dba. So, say for instance, if officers can't get to that 50-feet distance from the source, if they're within 80 to 100 feet of that source, and they get a reading on their meter, anything over 60, 60 to 65, they have probable cause to enter into the source location.
Do you have a slide on what you just said?
A slide?
Yeah, do you have a slide? Does this go forward? I know you, was there another slide about what you just said?
No, I don't have a slide for that. But I can provide that information. And that is the end of my slide presentation. If anyone has any questions, they can ask me.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm guessing your question. Ezra, we talked a lot about these low-frequency noises and those sounds traveling further and having a greater impact.
Yes.
Are there techniques at the source that a restaurant manager or a noise person responsible at the site can manipulate or dampen those bass frequencies?
Yes. If you have a trained sound system technician who is running the band sound system or the establishment's sound system, you can EQ or equalize the output signal to lessen some of that low-frequency noise. I think right here, we're looking at about 60, 60 hertz. Can't really see from here where the other ones are. Well, it's low-frequency noise. I can't really see. Let me check. Yes, 63 and 80 and 50. These types of frequencies are not so much necessary to be that loud at the source. And if they are turned down by a trained sound system engineer, it's still enjoyable, and people that are in the vicinity of the noise, or the music rather, will still enjoy it.
And when you talk about this technician, you know, we may not have that kind of expert to pop in on Fridays or Saturdays when the local band is playing. Is there a sound management for kindergartners where somebody would know what frequencies to adjust? Would the band have a person that knows how to do this? I guess it's my simple question.
Well, most bands, when they travel, you know, they usually have a sound tech that travels with them that puts their sound system together, unless that band is just extremely talented enough to do it themselves.
Okay.
But ideally, it would be beneficial for a band to have a sound system technician that would pretty much regulate their output signal. So, it's still enjoyable, but it's not as intrusive of a signal leaving the speaker's speaker system.
And where I was going with this is, is it possible to have a flyer or card to hand the band and say, "These are the frequencies that we'd like adjusted or moderated to improve the experience around downtown"?
The manager of the establishment has every right to produce such a document that will instruct the band to play at a certain level, to EQ the show at a certain level, so that is not too intrusive to any neighbors nor other residences outside of the establishment area.
Okay, and is there a, I know I'm oversimplifying it, but is there a certain threshold, a certain combination of these frequencies that we just know if you reduce these frequencies, it'll be better for us?
Yes. I would say, in this case, from the measurements that we took, we have 63 hertz, we have 50. These are the problem frequencies here.
Okay.
We have from 40 to about 80 hertz are the problem frequencies.
Okay.
If those are EQ'd lower, that would definitely help.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and yeah, these low frequencies, these are the bass sounds?
Yes, this is bass music, yes.
Okay.
This is the base of the music. So, anyone playing the bass, anyone playing the drums, any type of percussion, someone who has a voice as deep as mine could actually resonate a sound system.
Question.
Yes.
At the time when you was doing this, did you ask them, "Could they do this", at that time when you were measuring the sound?
No, I was being escorted at the time by local law enforcement, and so, that was not my primary motive at that time. My motive was to observe and take the measurements of them unknowingly just being, you know, normal, as you recall.
Okay.
Okay, where do we go from here?
That's what I want to know. What's the next steps?
I mean, you know, there's some other noise issues I don't know that were brought to your attention. I personally had get a lot of complaints about in-town and out-of-town trucks pretty much cruising to downtown, accelerating, and you know, as soon as they get about middle of the block, and they slow down, and they get, you know, gunning again. So, we have truck issues, we have issues other than this particular situation here. So, did you investigate other noise issues downtown? Or is this the site-specific only one that you investigated or researched?
We were, it was brought to our attention that the live music scene in downtown City of New Bern was causing some citizens to be concerned about that. Transportation noise is a little bit different of a study. That is also, I would say, in cooperation with the NC DOT. We have to do a lot more steps to take that, those types of measurements. I am not really sure what the City of New Bern's noise ordinance is, requires of transportation noise, so to speak. But there's a possibility at this point, it could be exempt. There's a possibility that it could be not mentioned. However, if you all would like us to take a look at that at some point, we could. It's a different animal.
Well, what we're struggling with is the fact that law enforcement doesn't, in other words, when, I mean, I've had some issues over the past weekend. They were construction noise-related. And by the time the law enforcement goes to the scene, there's no noise. And so, you know, we're trying to help the police department struggle with the fact that it's hard to, it's hard to run down a car, a truck that's halfway across the bridge over there by the time the police can get over here because they, I mean, some of them cruise around about four or five times doing it. And it's hard to, by the time you get over to the construction site, noise is abated. So, in the words of, you know, the music industry, "Get the drummer some", there's a lot of other issues with noise besides just this one study you've done that we need the tools, we're not experts, but we need the tools to give the police department so that everybody can be respectful of everybody and everybody at the same time can have a good time in New Bern. So, where do we go from here?
Mayor, I'll step in. We have a state statute that addresses that, and our code incorporates that state statute. It's just a matter of enforcing it. It's not really a sound issue. I think everybody agrees it's loud and obnoxious and annoying. It's just a law enforcement procedure problem, just pulling folks over and citing them. Police, you know, for probable cause, police have to experience the nuisance noise. And when they do, they can cite it under the state statute.
Yes, that is correct. If they cite it, they can only cite it if they experience it. They can only experience it if they're there and if it's measured. We also gave some recommendations of a sound level meter that the law enforcement can use to document these impact events. And when they're documented, it makes it easier for law enforcement to be able to have probable cause to issue a citation.
When you say meter, they have meters now, so the meter, how effective is the meter that they have now?
I'm not sure, but it needs to be a logging meter.
What about a cellphone meter, using that as a meter, to say that this is what's going on?
A cellphone meter is not a meter that would give you an actual event measurement that is accurate. It uses a different microphone, different type of software. It's not used for collecting sound data to be able to use in a report.
So, what you're saying to me is that if the wrong meter has been used and this person has been cited, is that something that can be held up in the court of law?
I don't mind jumping in. That's more of a legal question, Alderman Kinsey. If we're not there yet, I think is probably the fair answer. Right now, we have some meters that PD, in fact, one meter that PD is kind of using to learn the ropes with. And we'll certainly compare the recommendation against the meter that we currently have. And if it's not to standards, we'll certainly recommend that they acquire the meters that are recommended.
So, is the idea now that we have this information is to basically punt it back to you?
Yes, ma'am.
And draft something that you'll bring before us that will incorporate?
Yes, ma'am, the recommendation.
Decibels, so we will be going, do you believe, to a decibel system?
Yes, ma'am.
Rather than a 100-feet system like we have done in the past?
Exactly. We're going to take the current draft and incorporate these recommendations. And what's great about this report, and these guys have done a great job for us, is the soft spots, the areas that I really wanted and needed some technical advice on, these guys have offered up some really excellent recommendations to help us go in and smooth those sections over. So, the next step is take the recommendations, incorporate them into the working draft, circulate, do a public hearing, experiment with some of these levels, and see how we're feeling at that stage.
We have to do a public hearing?
You don't have to.
I thought we agreed that whatever came back, regardless if it was nay or yea, we were going to incorporate it.
No need for one. If you already put a copy, you want one.
And also to add, in addition to Mr. Kinsey's question about the meter, sound level, sound pressure level meters need to be calibrated yearly, annually. So, if this meter is not annually calibrated, it could cause problem, could be a problem in court.
Is there a cost incurred with that, getting it calibrated every year? Or is it something that could be done in-house?
It is not something that could be done in-house. It has to be taken to, sent out to a certified lab, and that lab will readjust the meter and the microphones and preamps to make sure that they are up to standard.
Is that part of the warranty, or is that an added cost?
That is an added cost. It could be anywhere from $100 to $200 annually. And the meter could possibly be away for seven to 14 business days.
Tell me, in a situation like this here, how many meters would you have to have?
Well, in a city such as New Bern, I'm not really sure of the square miles of the City of New Bern. 30. 30 square miles. So, my recommendation is that for one to two meters to start, to see how many violations there are. That's also dependent on budget. We did find one that was pretty, pretty cheap for the department that would be able to do not only logging, A-weighted max slow readings, and also be able to give you a documented report. I also believe that it has capabilities of GPS.
When you say cheap, what is your definition of cheap?
Well, I didn't necessarily say cheap. Portable would probably be a better word to say.
What was the price range?
Well, the meter that I'm aware of, and I think I shared with local law enforcement, the bare bones minimum is around $1,400 to $2,000 each meter. And that, I think, includes the microphone, preamp, and software.
So, about $1,500, $1,600 after you have it resurfaced every year?
Yes.
We currently have one, correct? Yeah, we currently have, we do have one now. It would just be additional purchase.
I'm not sure it measures up to this standard, but we have one to at least start running the ropes.
I think another thing that we were concerned about is, does your company have any kind of, do you do any consultation when you have site-specific noise issues that need to be mitigated, that you can defuse the noise in some manner? Do you, does your company do that?
Yes, we do do that. It becomes a little slippery slope of us working with the, with you as a client and then with, say for instance, a resident. But we do have people we can recommend as well to...
Well, do you do it yourself, or do you have to recommend somebody?
Do we do it ourselves?
D- does your company do that or do you just refer that to somebody?
We specialize in noise mitigation.
More like sound barriers or something like that, this.
He's saying it's a conflict of interest if he was to, if he gave us a recommendation and then say Black Bear wanted to know how to mitigate the sound, he feels like it's a conflict of interest?
Yes.
Okay. But is it based on you? Because if we don't have a conflict because you're able to help them mitigate, I don't know, would we have an issue with that?
Well, I think the question is who's gonna pay that bill? It won't be inexpensive.
Yeah, it wouldn't be us, right?
Right.
Okay.
Well, if, if that's been worked out, then I don't.
So you, would you need like approval from us because we have a contract with you when you did the, the? Okay, I didn't.
Oh, yeah. That's a, that's a good example. Yeah, yeah, right on cue.
So say Black Bear reached out to you to say, hey, this is what came back. Can you help me mitigate so I'm not getting ticketed? Do you need something from us as the board to say, hey, we appreciate your services? Thank you for what you did or you can work with both of us at the same time?
Oh, wow, that will be actually be a, a question for our principal.
Okay.
Consultant at this point. Um, yes.
Well, um, I ju- I just think that this should be a generalized discussion and not specific to any one business. There are quite a few.
No, I, I know.
Issues in here and I don't think his name should, uh, businesses should be mentioned.
Says up there are Black Bears, that's why I was saying.
Well, I, I, I certainly would have instructed the, the consultant not to do that because, uh, there's quite a few other sound issues other than one particular location. But anyway, what's done is done.
The night that you performed your measurements for, was this particular nightclub the only one playing music that night?
Uh, no, it was during Mum Fest, but Mum Fest was quite a ways away and over at that time. So, um, after that, I took measurements throughout the neighborhoods as well during the Mum Fest. And, um, uh, ended up at Black Bear's because it was the only outdoor music establishment. And I believe we were to focus on outdoor music establishment.
And again, part of that is, is we had a hurricane and there are at least two other places I've had complaints about, uh, that are, that are other locations and the only reason there's not noise issues there is they're not in business right now because of the hurricane. So you probably weren't aware of that, were you?
No, I'm not.
Well, the other place had, had mitigated most of their sound by turning their, um, amplifiers in a different direction. And that really helped. We didn't have the same amount of complaints that we had before. But, you know, with that being said, I think each of the businesses are trying. And Black Bears has worked very hard in building the structure and putting the rain curtains to really mitigate it. And, um, you guys are doing, I see them out there. Good job. I haven't gotten the first phone call, uh, during the winter months.
I haven't heard of them.
Yeah, so, I mean, and, and la- and last winter it was terrible. So kudos to you for, um, trying. So, um, you know, again, we still need a standard. We need numbers because we have other places where there is an issue. So we really need to try to resolve those issues and by having a standard in place, it would be good. And I said I wasn't gonna say a lot tonight. I already broke my rule.
So what do you need from us?
Nothing's nice, sir. We'll, we'll, we'll circle back with you. We'll incorporate these recommendations and then just kind of see where we are at that point. And we may need to loop these folks back in, uh, depending on, but we'll take the temperature at that time and see what we need at that point.
Thank you so much for all your information provided.
Yeah, they've done a great job. A, a great help to us.
You're welcome.
This is a hot topic.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Stevens, on these next items, uh, do you want to do them individually or?
That's entirely up to the board. If you wanna, uh, take all three of them together, they're all, uh, SRO contracts. Um, um, if you want me to hit them real quick, you, what?
Well, I, I think, uh, there might be some discussions. Does anybody want, have any discussion on these items?
Uh, some of them for, some of them.
I think we need to explain them because the dates are really funky.
Alderman Beagle, you seem to really be pretty detailed on that. Won't you get it started off?
Which one are we on?
We're on.
Item number nine.
Go ahead, Mr. Stevens, start off.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine is, uh, uh, consideration of the board to adopt a resolution approving a contract with Craven County Board of Education for the two thousand nineteen school resource officers at specific elementary schools. Uh, this contract covers school resource officers at J.P. Barber and Oaks Road, um, elementary schools for the period of, and this is what's gonna be odd, is July of two thousand nineteen through December of two thousand nineteen. Uh, although, uh, it, the contract had not been executed earlier, the Board of Education has remitted the payment for the services provided during that time. Um, and it was just a, a time lapse with between boards and trying to get the contract correct and everything else, uh, to make sure that everything and I, all the legal jargon was correct in the contract.
So this item we've just voting on, it, it's in arrears or retroactive because it was never officially done?
We, we have been paid for the services rendered based upon what was previously in the contract and what you see in this contract now. This is a standing fee that's been in place for a long time. So yes, ma'am, you're correct.
I just have one question. So since, so when we do this, we're doing this annually, we're not doing it based on the actual school year? Cause I know that.
Yes and no. Uh, so this particl- this particular. This particular item here is just for the months of July two thousand nineteen through December two thousand nineteen, retroactively. Now, the next two, I'll discuss a little bit.
Oh, I thought we were doing all of them.
Okay, all right. So I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving a contract with Craven County Board of Education for twenty nineteen school resource officers at specific elementary schools. Second.
Motion second, is there a discussion? Let's have a roll call starting with, uh, Alderman Beagle.
Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Bess?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Stevens, next item.
Okay, this next item is also a resolution approving a contract with Craven County Board of Education for the same schools, J.P. Barber and Oaks Road Elementary School. This will be from January one of two thousand twenty through December thirty first of two thousand twenty. So basically the current calendar year that we're in. Um, the, uh, the way they did these two contracts, they were based on funding grant amounts that were provided by the state. This one is, runs on a calendar year. The next item you have runs on the actual school year, which is the one from many years ago that was put in place. Uh, so this one runs from January one, twenty twenty to December thirty first, twenty twenty for the two schools mentioned. Uh, and the sum of compensation is forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars for each SRO. Uh, and, uh, happy to answer any questions.
Or have questions?
Do we receive that monthly or do you receive it lump sum?
I believe it is. I believe we invoice basically around quarterly.
All right, let them make a motion.
No, 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 sorry. I, I reckon my question would be, has there been any conversations with the school board about, other than are anything back from the school board since we had that conversation with them about their funding possibilities?
I've personally not heard anything from, since the retreat, whenever the individuals came and, uh, spoke with y'all about the item, or wanted to hear from the Board of Education at the retreat.
So what we're basically doing is just getting our ducks in a row of stuff we've already approved because we approved this in our last year's budget, correct?
Up till June, end of June, right?
So this though, so what we're approving right now is gonna obligate us for a po- a portion of the budget that we have not even talked about yet, correct?
That would be correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, can we do that? Can we obligate a budget that we haven't even committed to yet?
We would build that into the budget.
Mr. Attorney, can we do that?
I can't think why you can't.
Yeah, we, we do projects and.
I know, but we ob- obligated it in the budget, right? I'm just not sure. I just wanted to make sure about that.
Would it be smart for us to just do it?
I don't see why.
For this fiscal year and then do another one?
If, if we do that, we're gonna have to go back and get the Board of Education to approve it. Personally, I don't see a reason why we would need to do that. To me, it would be no different than us having an agreement in place with the, uh, the, the public library system that we pay them a certain amount every single year that we incorporate into the budget.
Mr., uh, Alderman?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I'd, I'd like to make the suggestion that, um, we have a few members of this board, whoever would like to participate, um, get with a few members of county board, a few members of the school board. Maybe the city manager can set this meeting up with the county manager. Um, I think if we wanna be good partners and neighbors in this, w- we've, we've sort of committed already to do something. And we need to allow ample time for anybody else to prepare to manage this if we decide we don't wanna do it. So I think we need to have some conversation with them. My personal opinion, I'll share with you, I think that this should be handled by the Sheriff's Department. I think if you had one entity, and I know Chief disagrees, but we'll respectfully disagree on that one. Uh, I think if you have one entity that's in charge, um, they have, it's my understanding, they have a sergeant that is housed out of the central office. So they already have contact on a daily basis with the school system. You could have one chain of command. Doesn't mean that the city of New Bern is not gonna respond. If there's a situation in a school within our city limits, we're gonna respond, we're gonna help out. But on the day-to-day situation, cause it seems like every year this comes up, there's questions about it. It was on the previous board, it's on this board. But we've gotta have some conversations before we make a decision on it. So I, my suggestion is we approve what's in front of us tonight and have that meeting as soon as possible and we figure out a path forward.
I second the, the approving of it.
Did you make a motion to, Bert?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Alderman, cool. Was that just item ten? But that was ten and eleven, right?
Ten and eleven, the two that's before us, yes, sir.
So, uh, any discussion?
Just real quick, Mayor, just so that I can get clear direction from the board, that's a re- recommendation. Was the board in agreement with that? And if so, um, is there certain members that?
Well, we're, I'm gonna do that right after we get this roll call.
Yes, sir.
So a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Bess?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
At this time, I'm just curious, uh, who would like to serve with Alderman Odom on this committee?
And it doesn't have to be me. I was just making the suggestion the group would do it, but I'll be happy to if nobody else wants.
I'll be glad.
And not, not, not a committee, Mayor, just, it's just a little, it's just informal meeting. This wouldn't be a committee, it would just be a meeting.
So we have Alderman Odom and Alderman Astor as their third Alderman that, one or, or Alderman that would like to serve on this?
I'll go ahead and do it, yes.
Okay. So there's your three aldermen that will be meeting.
It's appropriate that we have kids in the school system, so it makes sense.
Just, do you know how soon, just so I can get it on my schedule?
We'll, we'll figure something out.
I'll let, I'll let everybody know I'll need to check with the county manager and all those different board members and stuff.
Here, I'll sign.
Okay. Um, Ald, let's go to item number twelve.
Eleven.
Eleven, okay.
Yes, uh, item number eleven, Mayor, is another contract with Craven County Board of Education.
He did all of them once.
Oh, you did both?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And twelve?
Item number twelve, consider adopting resolution approving a contract with Fund Development LLC for grant writing services. Um, as you recall, November two thousand eighteen, the city, uh, city entered into a contract with Fund Development LLC for grant writing services. The contract expired in December of two thousand nineteen. Staff is seeking direction as to whether or not the board wishes to enter into a new contract through the remainder of this calendar year. Under the initial agreement, Fund Development assisted the city in securing eight hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-three cent in grant funding. A list of those grants and associated amounts are included as well as a summary. Uh, for, uh, the time period of the service that was provided, Fund Development was paid a total of thirty thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars for its service.
And what did we receive in return?
Eight hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-three cent in grant.
Pretty good, pretty good deal, I mean.
So does that mean we're, we're not gonna put out an RFP for?
W- we can do so. I'm just looking for direction from the board. I think it was kind of brought to us, uh, as staff to, to, uh, uh, get a grant writer to come in and do grants for residency and, and hurricane recovery. Um, and in doing so, that kind of expanded into some grant writing services, uh, uh, for all kinds of different things through either, whether it's through the Bait Foundation or whether it was through, uh, Golden Leaf or EDA or whatever. Uh, but obviously, you know, as you can see, it's kind of paid off. But if the board wishes to put that out as an RFP, we can definitely do so.
Well, while you're waiting on that, well, why don't we just go ahead and put it back to work and let them find some more money?
I agree. I, um, Fund Development LLC has done a wonderful job for the city as well as for the Findings Museum, finding grants, and I think we should just let her continue on doing her job.
Does this have to be a one-year contract? Oh, can it be a two-year contract? Cause I know sometimes you start on particular grants and it may overflow into the next year or something for, for as the grant writer.
Um, she, well, number one, she only bills, she bills hourly per grant. Uh, so as grants become available, oftentimes she reaches out to me or staff who is overseeing that to ensure whether or not we want to apply for that grant. So it's really kind of still our discretion as to whether we wanna apply for it and whether we wanna seek that grant. So, um, it, the year is just, I think initially it was kind of set up that it was a one-year contract so that it wasn't to exceed that, uh, amount, um, per grant, uh, for a period of one year.
Well, let me ask you another question. Where does she obtain her, uh, list of grants that's, uh, appropriate for the city programs and projects that's going on? Where does she get those grants?
So, um, a lot of it is, and Margaret's here, Margaret, if you wanna come up and, and, and kind of talk to that point, I'm sure.
That's the trick.
Uh, that's the trick of grant writing is knowing who to contact and where those resources are. And, and oftentimes it's, you know, through the work that she's done and the experience that she has, uh, where to find those. And, and oftentimes, especially with federal grants, they have a, uh, NOFA that's, uh, it's a notice of funding available. Um, they, they send out. So there's a lot of notices on the, the federal end, but it's really knowing what grants are out there, what they typically fund through those grants and the organizations that, that fund those, those types of projects or whatever. So if you wanna get on that real quick.
Sure, um, I do have membership, uh, through the Foundation Center and I get, um, weekly updates from them on grants that are available. Um, I also have, uh, a North Carolina Grant Newsletter that I receive. So, um, that's part of what the information that I bring to the city. Um, as well as just being aware of and knowledge about foundations in North Carolina that I've worked with for the last thirty years. So, um, a lot of it is just in my head, I guess.
So I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, adopt the resolution, um, rehiring, um, the Fund Development LLC grant writing services.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second, is there a discussion? See, now, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Beagle.
Alderman Beagle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman Bess?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Thanks, Margaret.
While you, while you're, if you got any, um, any, any, um, optimistic, um, ideas for the ensuing year or the next couple of years that you're, you, you see that we could, particularly with, uh, I don't know, Mr. Hughes, I know you do your own thing.
Jeff, in the redevelopment.
Um, what, what's, what's it looking like? Are there more grants out there?
Yeah, there are always more grants. Um, we definitely wanna go back to INCOR. Um, so we've got that application, uh, that we're gonna be getting ready. And, um, I actually have a conversation, uh, scheduled this week with the Cannon Foundation. So timing is good. I've been trying to get on their docket for a month now. Uh, so I'm gonna be talking with them about their interest in supporting New Bern's residency efforts. So I hope that, that will be good.
And we have, we have.
Clean water.
Yeah, we have multiple grants that are still pending. Uh, one of them's a huge EDA grant, uh, opportunity that we have that could potentially get, uh, our substation through Mr. Bichard funded, uh, eight million, is that correct?
Yes.
Ten, ten million. So, you know, we have some, some still pending grants that are out there to, waiting to receive word. Um, I'm hoping that our chances are gonna be good for that one being that we just completed a very successful EDA project with the Volt Center, uh, and closed that out. So I'm hoping that, um, that, that is a, is a good thing.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask to make sure that with the contract, she can go and apply for any grant for any project that we're doing. Is that how the, the contract is set up?
I- is, as long as, as, as it's a grant that is, is.
Yeah, for the city.
Official to the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't see any reason.
Like redevelopment?
The question would come is when we have grants that require matching funds of the city. And then oftentimes those are brought before the board. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, that we could receive, but we have a twenty-five percent match that we have to put in or a fifty percent match. And that means the board has to expend twenty-five or fifty thousand dollars depending on what the match is.
Right.
At that point, we would wanna get the board's say as to whether you wanna spend the money and go get.
I just wanted clarity. I didn't know if it was just for the residency.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sheen. Um, Mr. Stevens, on item thirteen, uh, I'm gonna make this recommendation, um, concerning it. Mr. Stevens, on item 13, I'm going to make this recommendation concerning it. The gentleman that was at this location wasn't quite sure of the address. I think from the information in the packet, I think I was physically there and Google, Google said I was. But sometimes on these parcels, it would be a really, it would help the Board if, if staff could kind of give us a front, rear, and a couple of side elevations of these parcels. This one here, I think I had mentioned to you, it, it looked to me like maybe it was an encroachment or, or something else is encroaching on it. But most of them pretty cut and dry. This one here was, is a little, was a little bit difficult to physically go check out before we put it on the, on the agenda. So again, I'm just saying, making that request for staff.
Certainly.
On these future ones. Thank you. Item number 13.
Okay. Item number 13, Mayor, is consideration of Board to adopt a resolution approving the sale of 2203 Chestnut Avenue. After receiving an initial bid of $375, the Board voted to initiate the upset bid process for the purchase of 2203 Chestnut Avenue. The bid was advertised, an upset bid of $450 was submitted. The tax value of the vacant .06 acre lot is $750, and this final offer exceeds 50% of the value. The property was acquired jointly by the city and counting through tax foreclosure in May of 2019. Commissioners, the state's taxes, interest, and penalties due to the city at the time of the foreclosure was $556.45, and the city contributed $480.99 toward the cost of foreclosing procedures. There's a copy of the final bid offer that's in your packet along with a map of the property. Sorry, we don't have the pictures, but, and there's a tax card that's included in your packet as well.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the sale of 2203 Chestnut Avenue.
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? Seeing, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Deagle?
Yes.
Motion to approve appointments with Alderman Odom?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Kinsey?
No, sir.
None tonight, sir.
Alderwoman Harris?
None.
None.
Okay. Attorney's report.
Nothing reported tonight, Mayor.
City manager's report.
Mayor, I have one thing. This was brought before the Redevelopment Commission at their meeting two weeks ago, I guess tomorrow. And as you may recall, there was an individual that approached us a while back, maybe about a year ago, for the purchase of a property at 1509 Washington Street. The individual that wanted to buy that at that time was seeking to purchase the property because, one, she had been flooded out of her property on North Hills Drive, and wanted to locate on that piece of property because it was adjacent to her mother's home. Okay? Since then, the individual who came in and made the request, did so, apply for the opportunity to get back in her home at North Hills and was, and has done so, and has basically, they gone back and, and fixed up the home and is now living on North Hills Drive. However, a family member is still interested in purchasing the property. The brother of the lady who came and approached us the first time is interested in buying the property, acquiring the property, and putting a home on it. So because the, I guess, the, the intent of the purpose with the individual who approached it initially was to use it as a, a home, to build a home, same, same situation, but for a flood-out situation, we thought it'd still be appropriate to, to get confirmation of the Board if you wish to still sell this property because it is still within the Redevelopment Commission area, and we had put a stop on all of those. So at this point, I'm looking for guidance of the Board of whether or not we want to go ahead and sell this lot. I think the Redevelopment Commission approved moving forward with it, but ultimately you still own the lot, and because the conditions have sort of changed, I felt it appropriate to bring it back to the Board to get your okay to go ahead and move forward with accepting the offer and starting the initial upset bid process.
This was the, the folks that were there at the redevelopment meeting?
That's correct.
And they were going to put a modular home inside the home?
Yes. And the family, the, the mother of the gentleman who wants to build there, buy the lot, lives in that home. Families lived there for many, many years, I understand. And so the objective of the Redevelopment Commission is to get homes built on these empty lots. So as long as that, and maybe we can put a timeframe or something, we can, we can't put a condition?
Yes, ma'am. What you can do is convey the property to the Redevelopment Commission, who would then sell the property with conditions to the buyer.
Well, that's a process I don't want to go through. And what do the, Mr. and Ms. Carter, they want to go through the upset bid process?
They will. It has to.
But I thought it, I thought the Redevelopment Commission unfroze this parcel and given it back to the city. Now, that was my understanding, that the Redevelopment Commission...
Yes, ma'am. The, the, the reason we have been sending properties to the Redevelopment Commission was to ask them their opinion on what should happen. And in this case, I believe that their suggestion was, fine, that can be sold. Now the question is, what does that mean? Does it mean that you're going to sell it, the city banks the money, and the property is sold without conditions? Or the city transfers the parcel to the Redevelopment Commission, the Redevelopment Commission sells the property through the exact same process, upset bid process, except they can put conditions on the deed that we cannot, we as the city.
I'd like to get the process of the Redevelopment Commission, this is what it's all about. I would like to leave it to the Redevelopment Commission, let them handle it, because that's what we, maybe Redevelopment Commission for.
Understood. So just in the spirit of transparency and, and what was, was talked about. So it's the understanding that our current rule or guideline is that the minimum bid for property in front of us is 50% of the tax value. Is that correct?
I don't know.
Yes. That's been our standard.
That's basically the Board direction.
That was our Board direction, that the minimum bid we would accept was 50% of the tax value.
Well, above not accept, but to, to even consider anything.
To consider, to move forward, and then of course, upset.
You can always decide to never sell it if you don't want to, right.
But if we do, if we do to...
Redevelopment Commission, they have to sell at appraised value. Can they still have the same 50% of tax value, whatever? Because there's, this is where the confusion is lying, and I believe, you know, the family buying it, of course, wants, you know, they do, they understand the chance they take in going through an upset bid process, that they could potentially, you know, have to bid higher or pay more. But that's a, I think, a risk. And, and again, Alderman Best there, it's in your war, you can correct me. But we were at the meeting, and this is what was basically portrayed to us and explained to us during the meeting.
No, that is correct. So that's why I was under the assumption that it was going to be diverted back to the Board of Aldermen here, us, and due to the fact that the Redevelopment Commission unfroze that particular parcel from under the Redevelopment Commission, that there was not going to be a problem here with this parcel back to the city, where it really was still with the city, but under the Redevelopment Commission. And now the, the bidding process, the, the customer, I mean, Ms. Carter submits in her bid, her, her deposit and go through the bid, upset bid process.
That can definitely happen.
Well, that's what I thought was settled at the Redevelopment Commission.
But I guess the only thing he's saying is we can't put any conditions on it. We can't say you must build a house within a year. We don't want that, we don't want the property to sit.
Already, Mr. and Ms. Carter already have a contract in place where they're going to purchase a modular home, and they're waiting on the approval of this Board so that they can go ahead and secure the parcel. That's what they're waiting on. That was discussed with Mr. Jeff or Gary as well. He looked over everything, and he's, he gave in an okay. So that's, that's at the point now.
Is it the same scenario that was the, the potential buyer, did they lose their property as a result of the hurricane?
No, the, the first buyer wanted to buy, purchase the, the parcel, lives over in North Hills, she was flooded out. Now it's her sister and her brother that are wanting to purchase the...
Are they going to use it for their residence, or is it going to be rental property?
They're using it for a family home because when Hurricane Florence came along, they all had to pack up and move out and go to Raleigh. So they're wanting to put this modular home there beside their, their mother's house for that purpose.
So it's going to be vacant most of the time? Just, is that what you're telling me, or is there somebody going to be a permanent resident there?
Well, I can't answer that question here tonight, but I do have Ms. Carter here, if you want her to come up and explain the purpose of that home, if the Board so allows.
Pardon me? I was saying, I didn't, are we allowed to do that?
We can do.
Because I know, like, with the upset bid process, we're not really supposed to be asking all those questions.
Sure, you can certainly ask, and maybe for not, as you suggest, but certainly free to ask, yeah, yeah. And obviously, the point, the point being made is, we don't know that the charities will be the highest bidder at the end of the day.
Exactly. And they are aware of that, that they may be outbid it. But I think, I, I would like to give them the opportunity, especially since this, this parcel is right adjacent to her parents' home, and they've been living there for...
Mayor. You would need a motion for a second. We have a motion second.
I just, I had a question. What, what's being asked? What, what do you want from us? Because we can't start the upset bid process tonight because we don't have a resolution in front of us. Are you asking, do you want it on our next agenda to consider this?
Essentially, what I'm asking is, the Board's okay to accept the bid so that we can initiate the upset bid process. This particular property, if you recall, because of the original condition, we were going to, to sell this property to the lady who had a flooded out home on North Hills Drive. So what my, my point is, is the conditions have slightly changed, it's a different person coming in to make the bid.
So, so if we say yes, proceed, you're going to take the deposit, then it's going to be on our next agenda to actually formally accept that, which starts the upset bid process, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Make a motion.
Second.
You made a motion?
Sure, yeah, I made that motion.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion, discussion. Not specifically about this, but about selling property by the city in New Bern or the Redevelopment Commission. Part of the spirit of the idea of the Redevelopment Commission was that there, Sir Waldman, myself included, very concerned about the ineptness of the city in New Bern, either from preclusion or impediment of general statutes allowing us to properly market property, and a lack of general knowledge of the real estate market, that we looked toward establishing a Redevelopment Commission so that, now, number one goal was to get some houses built. Number one, another idea was to quit necessarily just selling things, $350 or whatever the price might be, get somebody that had a little bit better background, expertise in this, that could, and not be impeded by law, from being able to properly partner with the New River Regional Association of Riveters, or put signs up, or whatever other means, to get the values up. Because we want it, we want to, we want, we want new homes built, we want real property values, we want abhorrent tax revenues, the whole, the whole nine yards. So I'm going to bring this on in for a landing as usual and say, I don't think that the Board of Aldermen or the Redevelopment Commission procedurally should be an advocacy group for individuals. The process in the past has been that if people want to buy property, there's a procedure within the staff of the city in New Bern to buy property. And I don't think that the city in New Bern Board of Aldermen or the Redevelopment Commission needs to get into the role of an advocacy group for individuals coming to an Alderman or a Redevelopment Commission member, and then buy a property. There's a staff procedure for that. And that way, it makes it very equitable for all concern, and nobody's getting any special treatment. And, and the market itself, the market itself, the interaction of buyers and sellers will determine that final value.
Well, you know, Mayor, I listened to you make that speech, and I'm going to have to say this much. From the beginning, the Carters have lived there on Washington Street, I don't know, what, 50, 60 years, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Okay. And here we have a young lady that wants to come here and purchase a parcel that the city had, that no tax base was on it. The city was responsible for keeping the, the grass clean, the lot clean, and stayed, I think it was over 10 years under the city of New Bern. And now you have a potential buyer here coming and wanting to purchase this property, and we're, and you're going to make a speech like that as if this is a law-abiding citizen that lived here in this city for years, pay their taxes, they want to purchase a parcel beside their parents' house? I don't think there should be any, there should be nothing said from us but to allow this citizen opportunity to buy this property. And I do thank the Board for, I do thank the Board for voting yes on this, but I just couldn't sit here and let a speech, you say a speech like that go said, and we have taxpayer and citizens here. Now, if these people were just coming into this town, been here a year or two, I would have said you need to take it through the Redevelopment Commission and let them handle it. But I intervene because these are taxpayer and citizens, good folks, mother 95-some years old, and they can acquire a lot beside their mother's house, so be it. And I thank the Board for allowing it, and that's all I have to say.
Well, thank you for taking me to the woodshed, but I just want to say, I qualify early on that my comments were holistically about the whole process and not...
I understand, exactly what you're saying.
And not specific to a particular sale. I think I made that qualification early in my comments.
Mr. Cilliatt, attorney.
From this one on, let's handle it that way.
Let me ask you a question. I, I'm all in favor of selling this piece of property or allowing for the upset bid process, if this is something that they are going to build a house on and live there. If it's going to be a piece of property that they're going to purchase, put a house on, and use it as income, rental income, I would be more in favor of it going back and going through the, the Redevelopment Commission. Is it appropriate for us to ask if what their intent is?
You're free to ask, but it's not legally binding. You cannot put any conditions on the property. So when you sell it, you sell it with all of its rights.
And Barbara, you say you don't know the answer to that question?
They have talked to Mr. Jeff and Jerry, they have a contract, they're being ready to purchase a, a modular home to put on that lot. Now, I understand what you're saying, you're talking about, not for rental purposes, but for family purposes.
So it's not going to be rental property?
Exactly, no.
Okay. If it's not going to be rental property, I'm all in favor of it. If it's going to be income property, I would like to see it go back to the Redevelopment Commission.
We do have someone from the Redevelopment Commission here tonight. I mean, if, I think they, Sabrina, you said in the beginning that they had heard it, they were okay with it?
Yeah.
Jeff had to say, we voted.
Let's just ask Ms. Carter.
Yeah, I think.
That's what I asked, but no one.
Did we vote?
Can we ask Ms. Carter?
Well, we got a, let's go back to this. Madam Clerk, would you, would you read the motion we have?
Yes, the motion from Alderman Odom was to accept a bid from the new interested party, Mr. Carter, and it was seconded in by Alderman Best.
Okay, cool.
Okay, is there any more discussion on that?
Can we ask the question?
Are you calling for the question?
I was asking the question as to whether or not they were going to use it to put...
Well, do you rule on that?
You, you are, the Board is free to open the meeting to an individual to speak and address the Board, and you're free to ask the question.
Well, we got an open motion, you want to do that?
Just have to have a motion to allow for it, and it's not illegal to do that.
We have a motion for that.
We got a motion on the floor.
Just out of the draw, out of the draw.
Okay.
Okay, let's have a roll call on that item, starting with Alderman Deagle.
Alderman Deagle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
That motion carries. Now, again, anybody want, any more discussion?
I have a question, yeah. Just, Mr. Davis, would be really, really helpful. I think we, we need some schooling, we need some information, not only for ourselves, but the Redevelopment Commission. I'm going to be honest with you, now I'm very keyed in, I am totally confused now, because, you know, informing the Redevelopment Commission, it was my understanding, and again, you know, that terrible assumed word, that they had some different abilities than the Board of Aldermen, that's the reason we were going to put the properties in there. So now I'm really confused. So if you don't mind, you know, I need a cheat sheet, I need an executive summary, but I think the Redevelopment Commission, we need direction, because this is not going to be the first instance. We're going to have many, and we need to educate ourselves, and we need to understand the process so we don't have to go through this again.
Yes, ma'am. I've already took a meeting with the Redevelopment Commission, probably the meeting in April, where I will go and make a presentation as to how all of this works, copy you, this board on that same process, so that we're, we're all on the same page. Because it, it is very confusing, and not only is the process confusing, but the answer changes depending on who's, who's getting the property. For example, you can sell privately with an upset bid process, but if you give the property, you sell the property to a nonprofit, then it has to be appraised by three appraisers. So it's a matrix as to how it works.
It'd be good to have that matrix.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Understood.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, you have anything else under the city manager's report?
No, sir.
Okay, this time new business. I would like to mention two items in, under new business before we get going. Alderman Bingle, there's a redevelopment commission meeting tomorrow.
I don't know.
Robbie.
When's our next redevelopment? I think we're down to once a month. Is Mr. Jerry not here this evening?
Yeah.
No, Matt is here for him, but I, I think it's, we, they had a redevelopment commission meeting basically thirteen days ago.
Right, two weeks ago.
So I think at that point, they're gonna do it once a month, so it will be.
In March.
In March.
Well, we, we thank you for being here tonight, Robbie Morgan, and we really.
March eleventh.
We really appreciate what your board is doing and we, the board here just totally supports and looks forward to the great job you guys are gonna be doing.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Robbie.
The other thing, so I don't waste anybody's time, Mr. Montaigne has quite a bit of construction work on Washington Street, and I've had some complaints about some potholes. You don't have to, I just wanna mention that to you, if you could check that out.
We're relevant to the property.
Yes, sir, thank you so much. Let's have a new business starting with Alderman Odom.
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Best.
Yeah, I just wanted, Mr. Stevens, just give us a little update on any FEMA, FEMA funding, anticipation dates, any kind of information from them?
Lots of different projects ongoing and in multiple different areas or steps within the FEMA process. I think two of the major ones you're probably most concerned with is the ditch and Stanley White. Stanley White currently sits at the State Stores Preservation Office. As soon as they give their okay, then the downward slide is, is on, and at that point, hopefully, we'll receive that funding fairly quick. The ditches, I know Matt has, we've been doing the identification of the permanent work, CAT D work, as they call it, category D. That's the permanent repairs that need to be done. They're almost complete with that. Once that's complete, matter of fact, at your next board meeting, you're probably going to see another contract for your approval for the same firm to be able to do CAT A work, identification of CAT A, which is debris and the mucking out of the ditches. So at that point, they'll need to go in, they'll need to do the services to determine, you know, the significance of, of what all needs to be done and, and for the whole eighty miles. So you're gonna see that coming to you. But all of that stuff is being submitted based on the different drainage areas that they're working in. There are ten different drainage areas, so there's ten different projects within the permanent work area. So a lot of different things are coming down the line. With regards to a lot of the other works, docs, peers, everything else that needs to be done, we're working through those processes and, and getting fairly far along with that. And, and some funds have already been released. I can't remember what the total number is off the top of my head, off the spur of the moment kind of thing. But we've gotten quite a bit of funding back, but the two big items, I kinda give you a little detail on.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Alderman Kinsey?
No, sir.
Alderman Astor?
Nothing.
Alderman Harris?
Yes, I got a question about the noise ordinance. They wanna know if, if one, it comes into effect and we vote, will it be just downtown or what be for a citywide?
It'll be citywide, yes, ma'am.
And then the other thing is, I just wanted noted that I will be in DC for the next meeting, so I will be appearing by phone. So I'm gonna call in on the little thing, just so y'all know. And then, this is the last week to vote, don't forget to vote, March third. That's it.
Alderman Bingle?
I have nothing. Can everybody hold their phone?
One thing before we get to the next item, there is a, an event Saturday at one o'clock at St. Peter's AME Design. And Mr. Hughes, would you like to come up and give us some information on that? Mr. Wofford, would you like to come up with him and kinda make, make any comments about the, the event?
Okay, so this Saturday, we're gonna, we're gonna have our ceremonies dedicating the two plaques at Cedar Grove Cemetery and Greenwood Cemetery. So the event is gonna start at 1:00 PM at the church you mentioned. Once that service is over, we'll go over to Cedar Grove Cemetery at the main gate, where we'll unveil the temporary marker. We've ordered bronze plaques, those have not come in yet. We expect those to come in around mid-March, so a temporary marker will be placed and that will be unveiled. Then we'll go over to Greenwood Cemetery and do the same thing over there. And then, from there, we'll proceed to the Omega Center for another event, and I'll let Mr. Wofford talk about that.
After the affair, we're gonna have our dinner at the Omega Center. And I think that Alderman Best was, made the motion that this county would pay for that. Was that right?
I made, I made the motion.
Oh, I pointed to the board and Alderman Bingle made the motion that the city would take care of some of the expense.
How much of the expense will you cover?
Excuse me?
How much of the expense are you going to cover?
The city's gonna cover five hundred dollars.
Okay, that would take care of about twenty-five people. Now, let me explain something to the board. I'm, I'm not a rich man. My wife and I both are retired school teachers, so that tells you something about my income. Plus, we've been retired thirty-five years. That tells you something else about my income. But I'm going to put in the rest of the money for the, no, I'm taking it out of my wife's account. My account is zero because I pay the bills. The rest of the funding for the three thousand that we, that you got, there was some question about that we sent to the board, an invoice for three thousand dollars to cover the speaker, the soloists, to pay for the church and that sort of thing. I, I find it difficult to believe that this board would not honor that, but it doesn't matter to me one way or the other. You know, in a hundred years, nobody's gonna say what kind of car I drove, what kind of house I lived in, what my bank account was. I only hope they say that I went out and tried to change the world and make the world a better place. I'm gonna, I asked my wife if I could take it out of her account because I don't have anything in my account because I have to pay the bills. And she said, if it means that much to you and it will help someone else, just go on and do it. So as I explained to the mayor, that three thousand, I will pay. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm close to eighty-eight years old. What am I gonna do with three thousand dollars ten years from today? I'm gonna be dead. So it doesn't matter. So I, and if you have problems with getting the caterer to cover the remaining costs of the affair, please contact me, okay? And I will take care of it. We need to have the caterer set up something for about seventy-five to a hundred people.
Yes, that's already been handled.
Okay, and I will, I will take care of the, I will talk to you about later and take care of the other expenses for that also. It's, it's, I don't understand something, but, yes.
Mr. Ben, you know I love you. So here's the thing, 'cause I've been getting emails and it's been a big to-do.
Wait, I can't, I, I'm.
About what was going on.
I don't hear you, I, my hearing.
Can you hear me? I said I've been getting emails and it's been a big to-do on the whole situation. And the, the main concern is, there's individuals in the community that are asking that the ceremony and the plaque situation could be put on hold for this reason. Let me just explain, I'm just getting it out so it's on record. They feel that the situation that happened then years ago, that they wanted to do research to see how much a plaque cost then and how much a plaque costs now. And they wanted to be able to have this information put together because they wanted to go to the city with that number, and whatever that number was gonna be, they felt the city should pay for whether it's the plaque, whether it's gonna be storyboards, the information. They just wanted a little bit more time. They wanted to build a bigger committee to have a conversation around it because they don't want the plaques to be put in place. Say this board overturns, a new board comes on, and then what we, what we did for the, the plaques, we go ahead and say, okay, no, we wanna change it. So we were trying to get, they wanted to get the community together, not to say that it wasn't done, but come together just to have more input so that, you know. And I know, I know it's frustrating.
No, it's not frustrating. It's, it's understandable. I read Bill Hand's article in the paper about the Black Convention, in which one member stood up, who wanted to get blacks to, pass a motion to get blacks to vote, and it was opposed. They didn't want to do that. And look, I understand black people. I understand the problems in the community. And I know what, there's nothing we could have done to satisfy all of the citizens in Craven County and New Bern. We couldn't do it. We did our best, and we're going to stand up and do what is right. Now, let me explain something to you. I, I understand that some of the board members, some of you, Count Alderman, have discretionary funds, that in theory, you could help out with this. If you don't, I don't care. Nothing's gonna stop it. The Tryon Palace people aren't gonna stop it. No one else is gonna stop it. We're going on with this affair, whether you like it or don't like it. Please get that. Now, we're doing, I'm doing this because I think it's the right thing to do. Now, you talked about the cost of, of the borough some time ago. I computed the cost in my head. The way I did it was this. I bought a nineteen thirty Ford Model A, which I still have, for sixteen thousand dollars. The darn car in nineteen thirty sold for four hundred and thirty dollars. By my calculation, the amount that the original boy put to dig those people up and dump them over there, which in our, in today's currency would be twenty thousand dollars, and you are not willing to even come up with half of that. Okay, that's no big deal. Don't worry about it. Alderman Best, I appreciate your motion, and I will handle the cost for the, for the affair, okay?
Just a second. Mr. Attorney, is that, can we use our special appropriation funds to help apply to this bill? For, I'm spanking for myself for basically the food.
My recollection is that the board had agreed that the board would effectively approve those kind of expenditures, and from the, from the financial point of view.
We never got that.
So, so let me ask this, 'cause earlier I asked the question about the spending of public funds.
For a public event.
It has to be public, so you can't limit the amount of people that are coming. So we can't say it's by invited guest or whatever. So I wanna make sure it's clear.
Right.
Second of all, Mr. Wofford, my only issue, I'm getting the same phone calls. My only issue is that I don't understand how we can have a ceremony and an unveiling when the plaques aren't ready. Why can we just not wait two weeks or three weeks till the plaques are ready and do the same thing then? I, I mean, I'm having some concern from citizens that don't understand why, why we're doing this when things aren't in place. And then the third question, maybe you can ask for me. I understand, and my most humblest congratulations to you that you are. Oh, that's not.
I mean, I don't, I don't know if you wanna put that out there.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's up to, I mean.
Okay, I understand that you may be receiving some kind of acknowledgement or, or an award or something like that, and I'm, you know, is this tied in with the event? I just wanna, I'm getting the calls and I want the correct information to be out there. I don't wanna be putting information that I don't have confirmation of.
Thank you. We have compromised at every turn, and as I explained to the mayor in this situation with the, with the community. We decided not to move them from the Greenwood.
Because we can't.
We've compromised at every, at every point. Now, about the award, there's going to be no award made at the ceremony. Governor Cooper gave me the Order of the Long Pine Leaf Award, but it's not gonna be made at ceremony. We, we dropped it out of that. It's not gonna be made there. Anyway, the, the agency that sponsored me, James City Historical Society, didn't want it there. So that's not a part of it. Now, but one thing, let me, let me clarify one thing here. Reverend Johnson and I have put a lot of time and effort into this affair. The board, the, the Department of Recreation has done a magnificent job with their share of it. They have done a yeoman's job in setting this thing up. It's going to be, whether you like it or don't like it, it's going to be this Saturday at one o'clock. You can attend if you want to. If you don't, I don't care. It's going to be this Saturday at one o'clock. I'm fed up with this. Let me tell you something. I didn't get the Long Leaf Pine Award by not doing anything. All of my life, I've tried to make the world a better place for everyone. I'm gonna continue until I die. I don't buy green bananas, but I'm gonna continue, continue doing this until I die. If you want to, Alderman Best, again, please contact me regarding this and we will have you. Reverend Johnson wants to say something. He's more milder than I am, and he's more on the side of the guy, the great Potter, so he'll talk to you.
I just wanted to, to say, one little main reason that Mr. Ben Wofford and I feel that is of great importance and of a historic, uh, significant to have this celebration at the end of Black History Month, because it, it's all about making history. And whether you accept it or not, history will be made here in New Bern. Because you hopefully decided to do something about a situation that laid on the table, might have been kept under the rug. And when it came to our acknowledgement, we approached you about somebody needs to do something positive in making some correction toward this evil, cruel happening that was afflicted upon New Bern citizens, especially after the miracle. So Alderman Harris, to speak to your situation about others that wanted, that, that called you or emailed you, I can't figure out why those individuals did not come to the table with Mr. Wofford and I to discuss why they want to put it off. And I'm the one that believed in, as the scripture says, "Let us come together and reason," said the Lord. We should be able to come, we should know, we are people that should be willing to listen to each other and to compromise with each other. And so, as Brother Wofford said, we have put prayer, a lot of sacrifice, sweat and tears to make this historical event very significant in this city. And we certainly, Mr. Mayor, cannot rest in our, in our beds knowing that we not go through with this after you and others have made, have commissioned us to go forward. So, thank you very much.
Pastor Johnson, before you take your seat, I just wanna make confirmation here. So this is, to me personally, coming out of my special appropriation funds, I am allowed, since this is a citywide event, there's no number to the amount of people that can attend, I can pay for the remaining balance of the dinner out of my funds.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, up for what she'd have. Yes, yes. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other new business at this time? Do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir, I do believe you need a brief session, pursuant to 1:43, 3:18, 11:08, 6, to discuss a personnel matter.
Motion second is a discussion. On favor, the motion say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay.